And I'm not gonna keep y'all all night because I know you guys are ready for this one more half day of school before you start break. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and welcome everyone. And we will start with a motion to come out of closed session.
I move that the school board, having been in closed session pursuant to a proper motion, come out of the closed session.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up is certification of our closed session, do we have a certification?
Whereas the Franklin City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712.D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Franklin City School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Next up, motions from closed sessions, so we'll start with personnel agenda, do we have a motion in regards to personnel agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the personnel agenda and the personnel addenda agenda.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve both the personnel agenda and the addendum as presented, do we have a second? We have a motion and we have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
You have three ayes and one abstention, that motion does carry. We also have one other item, relocation of JPK self-contained classroom, do we have a motion in regard to that item?
I move to approve the recommendation to, for the relocation of a self-contained classroom to...
Okay, we have a motion to approve the relocation of the JPK self-contained classroom, do we have a second? A second? We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Alright. Next up. If everyone would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, item 2.7, approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve our agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion does carry. Next up, 2.8, roll call, Ms. Moore, would you lead us in roll call, please?
Sure.
Present.
Present.
Tanya Smith, Rochelle Williams, Dr. Andrew Shelton.
Present.
Jerry McQuarrie.
Present. Um, we do have a quorum. Next up, citizens' time, Ms. Moore, do we have anyone signed up? Alright. That takes us to the last item in section 2, 2.10, SRR3 funding. As you may recall, the American Rescue Plan Act requires that we hold periodic public hearings so that we can receive feedback from the community and stakeholders in regards to our proposed SRR3 funding. We did get approval, final approval on that grant November the 5th. So, that has been approved, so I will open up the public hearing, public comments section, for the SRR3 funding. Do we have anyone that would like to speak in regards to the SRR3 funding? Do we have anyone that wishes to speak in regards to the SRR3 funding? And one last time, do we have anyone that wishes to speak in regards to the SRR3 funding? Hearing none, I will close that public comment time and we will move on to the consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, first off is a budget adjustment. This is actually an amendment to the budget adjustment. And this is just a reallocation of funds. Next up is the memorandum of understanding with ODU, Old Dominion University. This is in regards to that teacher certification piece. And the classes provided through ODU, they give us a discounted rate for specific courses. So this is just an update to that memorandum of understanding. And then lastly is the MOU with the Virginia Department Health, this is in regards to that Vista, the...
COVID testing.
Yes, COVID testing, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
No problem.
Had my brain just locked on me. Any questions in regards to those three items? Hearing none, do we have a motion in regards to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Up next, item number four, finance and federal programs. Is Mr. Ryder on with us?
Hi, Dan Board Chair, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Ryder.
Thank you. Here is the first item on for the vouchers for payment, these are all of the new member manuals. It's a lot of small items, it's quite a couple of pages here, about six pages, but every one of these items, the cash flow for this stuff is plotted out weeks ahead of time. And so, you know, these are the expenses, about $267,000 of operating funds. Below that is the grants for about $396,000. And since these were paid in November, they were claimed very shortly thereafter. And today we received $477,000 in federal reimbursements. So this is just showing any out-of-side vouchers. Anybody have any questions on this?
Any questions for Mr. Ryder in regards to the vouchers?
My only question is that when SunTrust Bank comes up as a vendor, how does that work?
That's our credit card.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, that, yeah, okay.
You know, he allows a tiny little service.
Right.
Any other questions in regards to the vouchers? Alright, Mr. Ryder, I think you're good to move along.
Very well, the next, next thing up is the substitute hourly schedule. What happened was, the minimum wages in Virginia went up back in May, and then they went up again in October, and they're gonna go up again in about two weeks. And so what happened was, we found that we have people that are paid on a daily basis that, you know, the new HR director brought my attention that when you divide that out by the hours, if you're not making a wage. So, luckily she told us early on and we, very quick, I changed the schedule here so you got the, you know, when the first, when the year started, that was what was approved, but then October 31st it became that. And then January 1st, in a few weeks, it's gonna change again. So it's, it's kinda messy because we have to pay in October, we have to pay in November and December at this rate. And then January 1st, we gotta change our rates again, so a lot of work between now and the first of the year. But this, this far column will write really, you're actually, you're actually approving both of these. I had, I had this on for October, for October board meeting, but I, I think we got it kind of sidelined in October and, and we only have one more meeting in November, so this is as soon as we could get it to you. So we need to, we need to approve this because it is law. Everybody, if anybody was not paid the right amount at the right time, it'll be retroactive to pay to them. Now there is, you know... So, does anybody have any questions on that?
Any questions for Mr. Ryder in regards to the proposed pay rate changes? Hearing none, do we have a motion in regards to the proposed pay rate changes?
Move to accept the pay raise changes as presented.
Alright, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Alright.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, this brings us to the normal financial report for the month of November, as of November 30th. First slide, second slide, the projections. Now, on slide three, I just wanted to let everybody know that I've removed the projections that go to the end of the year from the main financial statements, it's a little bit, you know, accounting-wise because the one set of statements concluded conferences, but the main financial statements that myself, Superintendent, and Finance Committee are really relying on are the cash flow statements, which do not contain incomparables. So at the January 4th Finance Committee meeting, we're going to kind of maybe migrate away from one and just present one because really the cash flow projection one, and it, it takes into account all of the incomparables, but it's just too, the war is to keep two sets of financial statements for very temporary reasons, I mean, you know, once the month is over, you show it, it doesn't, but it's a lot of work to create the whole. So, so on the next slide, you'll see that, you know, usually you guys see, you know, the yellow, the blue, and the green that takes it out to the end of the year, but just for this month, probably, I just wanted to show you where we are under the yellow is, is last year's, this is just the general fund content. And where we are this year under the blue, so, you know, like for example, you know, state revenue 8.5, we've got 3.2, and so... The only thing we can draw on here is like 42% of the year is gone, a lot of people like to look at that. And so you can look at the expenses, like, oh, well, we've only incurred 27% of the instruction and 38% of that. They're interesting statistics, but as time goes on, the thing starts to move its, its way back to normal, unless something's really, really wrong. So the OMD maintenance, over $64,000, they're, you know, over 103% because the budget figure wasn't changed for the rollover, so that's a, that's another discussion that we have, I have Superintendent and the Finance Committee on January 4th. But suffice to say, we're about a quarter million dollars positive right now in the general fund. The tax book fund, remember, this is the next slide, the tax book fund, remember, is a standalone, kinda like cafeteria, you know, it's separately funded. You can only have a specific expense bill there, and the cash balance cannot get too high, under the state of Virginia, it gets mad, so we have to spend that into a deficit this year. And so, we are already at $112,000 deficit, so we're right on, you know, right on schedule there. So, so that's fine, there's nothing wrong there, I'm projecting an ending balance in June of about $132-ish. It's a healthy balance. This is the cafeteria plant, or the cafeteria fund. And again, you know, the projections there are actually matching the budget because it's, it's a little difficult to, to plot this out. I have made a much more in-depth analysis of this one, but it wasn't, I couldn't get it ready for tonight, so I'm gonna take that to the Finance Committee on the 4th. And, taking a note here, cafeteria, January 4th. And so, I'll report out on that at the work session, January 6th, no, January 13th, January 13th. Okay. And so this is the grants. So the grants, you know, we've got about $5.7 million of budget. And remember, you know, the way grants work is, you know, you might get, you know, two or three years of grant, but we put it all into the budget, so it's, you know, only, only a million two of revenue out of $5.7 million, and we're halfway, almost halfway through the year, that is not, that is not unusual. As in every year, unless we, you know, start trying to really narrow in exactly what year a grant's gonna be spent, but no other division does that, they put the whole thing in here so they can balance with something called Omega and, and the Junior Department of Education, so this is not unusual. There's the, you know, the 665 down there, this is as of November 30th, from a cash flow perspective, that's ancient history. Because most of, you know, almost all of that has probably already been received. That's the federal flow. So, with the animal up, there's the, there's the overall financial statements. And when I rule them up, it's all I'm doing is putting the budget numbers in and anything that's been incurred. So the negative 600 is the, is pretty much the grants, and then we, we get the money in December. And if we close the year in December, it would be right back up to zero, so we'd be fine. So now, now we, that's the regular conference-based financial statements, so now it's only three slides here. We'll be giving the cash flow versions of those. And, there's only three slides, so... Oh, okay, split the grants. Okay, so, okay, so I just wanted to show you that this is the general fund. Here, under the December 3rd, it actually, had actually occurred, it's the 15th. So from 15th to the 31st are our best projections at the time. Don't be alarmed by the difference, you know, instruction, salary, benefits there at $61,000. It's only 250 on December 15th, but it's 382 on December 31st. We do not require that we need your new teachers. What happens is we, we, we hold back the benefits from the actual cash dispersion. So remember, this is cash flow, so it was incurred, but we're not gonna pay it till the end of the month. So that's why you'll always have a big payroll on the second payroll of the month, and that's how I project it. That's how it's projected. Now, on the next slide here is the grants. And, you know, it's, it's always, you know, this is the tricky part where you, all these dollars that go out, that big blue dollar in the middle there was the SRR3 retention statements. They were paid on December 1st, and that claim was submitted December 2nd. So I'm projecting that that will be here before the end of the month. And so, that's the kind of, that's kind of like the clockwork claims that were, that came out of October. Now, this green line down here, as long as that's positive in the black, everything's good. If that ever goes red, the problem is, or it gets too low. So as you guys can see, it's eight, I get 28, 78, 890, about a million dollars by the end of the month. This, this next slide is an indication of how quickly something can change. So you can see it's eight, eight and a million, right? If you scroll up a little bit more, Tammy, so people can see the green. See the green down there, 26,000? That would cause, that should cause somebody a heart attack, and that's me. Why did that happen? Well, it's just how fast things change. And that's why if anybody talks to me about my projections from even a week ago, ancient history. These things can change very quickly, and I and the business office have to change with them. So here's what happened. We found out from the DDOE that our federal payments were going to be delayed. So all those figures that I had in the December 15th column, they were not gonna get here by December 15th. I had them come in on December 3rd, which gave them five weeks. And they said, no, they're coming in on the 10th. And when I said they told me on the 10th, they, they're coming in on the 10th, I got it in writing from the Director of Finance and Bureau. The very next day, I checked, and I had to call him back and say, those aren't scheduled for the 10th. And he says, oh, yeah, sorry, they're actually coming on the 17th. So when you take out all those revenues that were gonna come in, you can see it really, it, it has a tremendous shock. And then the very next day, it corrects itself. So that there is why Superintendent and I sent a letter to the city saying, there's a low level alert, we, I had to make up a term, it's a low level, the cash is gonna go very low, don't panic. You know, I, I expected this, by the way, I sent it to them on December 7th for something that's gonna happen on the 15th. And that's exactly how this thing is supposed to work. I will give them plenty of notice that something's gonna happen. And so this thing worked exactly the way it was designed. So, does anybody have any questions on that?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Ryder?
Was the city satisfied with that?
Yes, they were, actually, nobody ever called me or emailed or anything, they just accepted it, I guess we moved on.
Gotcha, thank you. Alright, Mr. Ryder?
As promised. Is there a question?
Nope, no questions.
Okay, so the next thing is promised, I'm gonna report out on the grants, it's all underneath, so... You know, this first, the next two slides is who's assigned the assigned grant. This is kind of more of an internal thing, who's doing what. But on the slide after this, I'll just point out a couple things down there. Under the green bar, it's kind of like the new stuff we're working on. So, Dr. White had kind of mentioned to me the Rite grants coming in, she's working with that. It's some sort of retention recruitment grant for teachers. The HVAC funding for the DDOE, that is one thing we asked at the track session with the C, we'll see, the application was submitted. And we're waiting approval, I think, you know, the problem with some of these grants is they, one guy will tell you we approved, and then it goes to three, three more approvals. And so it's not finally approved, it's preliminarily approved, so I'm gonna stop using that word approval to say that it's submitted. Same with the driver recruitment grant, we even called him today and said, we sent this to you, you know, weeks ago, what's the deal? We're working on it. Okay, alright. The Vista MOU, that's the, I put it here because it's kind of a grant. I mean, we're gonna spend money and we're gonna ask for reimbursement. The grant, but I guess an MOU, that's the official structure. So then we get into the actual grant readings. I think with Dr. Sterling on this quite a bit, and we are starting to show, we're starting to bring the people together. You know, we, we set down the goal because we wanna get these things spent in the school year that they're intended. And so, you know, let's get 60% of it done by February 1st, we'll spend the remaining 40%. And so it's, she put a very good, specific target, and we're all focused on this target. You can see we're getting closer and closer. Now remember, like here Title 1, you can't spend on 13 until you spend 12, so... Or actually they do, some of these do spend confirmed, but a lot of it is payroll and stuff, so you, once you run out the payroll on one, you kick them over to the other grant. So you got Title 2 there, two of the goals are met, that's great. Carter, Carter Perkins Grant. If you go to the next one, there's a lot, there's a lot of smaller grants that we gotta keep our eye on. But, under the special head and the preschool, I'm kind of getting more and more involved in that because, you know, there's, there's a big dollars, there are $300,000 down there in Fund Number 92. And we're getting there, you know, out of the 275, 186 already spent, that's salary benefits. I noticed that we were a little anemic there, we had like three, four open positions, and we filled them recently, so that's cool. So we're, we're moving along on Fund 92, and then we'll kick over to Fund 90. Same with the, the other CCDIS, little bit of a challenge, that was actually got three separate fundings that has to go like a waterfall cascade, done, it's done that, done, it's done that. And then preschool, same thing. The JPG is just, you know, salary benefits being spent, it'll be spent by year end. And then the next one, for the last slide, yeah, the first two, remember the American, American APR, American... Oh, APR, the American Recovery Plan. Yeah, they came up with more sped money, and so we actually put the, the specifics on that 13,000, put the specifics in on that today, and they approved that. And then I got the care's funding over there on the green. Stream 1, we're gonna, probably the next time we're reporting quotes, the stream 1 will probably be spent. Stream 2, still got about $4,000 left in the grant balance. What we're right now is paying all the people out of stream 4. And then SRR3, and at the time of November, I did not want to report something on a future event, so at November 30th, you know, we hadn't put the budget in yet. So, when I, when I report on this next month, for December, you'll see the figures in there in the retention cycles. Okay, so, is, do I have, are there any questions on the page?
Any questions for Mr. Ryder in regards to the grants? I do not hear any, I will say thank you for that, that was, it's good to see whose hands are in which grant. Because I know we've had questions about that from time to time, so that is very, very helpful, to see that, so thank you for that.
Alright, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Alright, moving right along, item number five, Superintendent's Report, I believe Dr. Sterling is on with us. Dr. Sterling, are you there? I think you are muted. Alright, we'll give her a minute, she may be having technical difficulties, we'll move along and we'll circle back. So we'll move down to, so don't get excited because we're moving to number six, I know, because you know number seven comes after number six, don't get excited! So, important dates to remember, of course, tomorrow is an extremely important day, it's only a half a day. Tomorrow is a wellness day in the afternoon for the, so it's early release day, which leads into winter break. All school offices will be closed and school buildings will be closed until Monday, January the 3rd, when we will resume normal operating hours. We do have a work session scheduled for the school board on January 13th. We figured since school's coming back on the 3rd, we didn't want to challenge everybody with working at a breakneck pace to be ready for a work session on the 6th, so we moved that to the 13th. And then we will have our regular school board meeting on the 20th. And then of course, January 17th is also a day off as we honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that day. And the wellness days are also listed as well for January. Business by school.
Good evening.
Oh, there she is, hey, so now we'll circle back. We'll pause there.
I do apologize, I log out and log back in.
That's okay. So we will circle back to the Superintendent's Report, Dr. Sterling, if you would be so kind.
Yes, okay, this is Superintendent's Report, I'm gonna try to widen it, okay, thank you. you. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Moore's gonna go to the beginning of the superintendent's report, we had a meeting held on December ninth, with the joint, uh, excuse me, S P B S joint city council meeting, uh, also I wanted to inform the board about that meeting, uh, the city manager asked us, we sent her a letter, and we did, just wanted to inform the board that we did do a clarification of retention of the rollover request, we provided it to the city manager on Wednesday, December fifteenth, so that was, uh, applicable, here is the letter. Ms. Commander Barrett, we asked for clarification on how we wanted to use the rollover fund of five hundred and seventy-seven thousand and twenty dollars, two hundred dollars, and we sent the clarification request, so we also sent the future request, and the future request was the school division requesting that any cell classes for this three years twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four remain in the school division and not deferred to the city, so that the school division can cover the float on S R three grant expenditures. So we don't wanna repeat of last October, so we are requesting to keep those funds in the division. And we have not heard back from her, again, we did just send it to her yesterday. On the, the Vista update, we presented this to the board sometime in December, and it was approved, however, it has taken longer for Vista to come back to the division, uh, to make their decision, and we just received the M O U, so the next steps with the M O U on the set agenda, and I wanna thank you all for approving that. We will be having a site visit on January, January twenty-two. Our goal now, since the grant, excuse me, since the M O U was approved, and our proposal was accepted, we will be advertising to hire personnel based on grant allocation, so we'll be looking for a testing coordinator and a testing nurse class clinical support. Our start date is projected for the COVID testing, random testing, and remember, and in voluntary, voluntary consent on February twenty-twenty-three. And this also is city approval of grandparents to send back their, uh, permissions for that. And this is a grant allocation. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Moore. Next, we'd like to buzz this again, announce Franklin High School Drama Troop makes history, congratulations Franklin High School Theater Troop makes school history for twenty-twenty-one, Franklin High School Theater Troop played second over the weekend, over the weekend of December fourth, with this, at the Virginia High School League Classic One State Theater Festival, which is the best finish in the history of the school program. We'd like to thank the faculty, and the members of the faculty, and the students, and we are extremely proud of our Theater Troop, and we look for many, many, many more amazing plays and theatrical productions to come. Today, as you can see, it's an exciting day at, uh, S T Morrison, they have your Winter Festival twenty-twenty-one, the students participated with inflatable, they had popcorn, cotton candy, and snow cones. Thursday, today, with free taste in second grade, and tomorrow will be, December seventeenth, will be grades, Thurs will sit, the students were excited, I contacted the schools, the teachers, uh, had the opportunity to plan during the time, and everyone came together, I cannot thank S T Morrison enough for how quickly they put this program together, they had almost a day, I'm gonna say a day and a half, and they'll say, uh, less than twenty-four hours, but as you can see, they pulled off an amazing event, so I wanna thank Dr. Tindall, and her team, Mr. Walters, Mr. Combs, everyone, Mr. Riddick, I hope I didn't mix anybody, you know it's bad when we start calling names, but everyone at S T Morrison, thank you so much for the, uh, holiday winter festival. Next, you have J C King, winter block party, Friday, December seventeenth, all grades from ten-thirty to twelve-thirty P M, they will also have, again, popcorn, cotton candy, chariotine, and games, arts and crafts, swim activities, and a reading room, and dance choreography, so this should be really, um, fun event for J C King, this is something that we wanted to make certain that the kids, uh, have, especially in the middle school, and a creative outlet, and just time to feel the kids, so we're excited about that. Dr. Saffron, your team, I can't wait to see the pictures and how this all turns out, thank you. And, uh, lastly, I'm gonna plug in for, uh, Mr. Phelps, his team had their holiday festivities today, I think he's sitting there with his sweater and jeans on, but he also had an exciting event, and the teachers enjoyed themselves at their holiday party. And that is the conclusion of superintendent's report, again, everyone, happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Sterling, anyone have any questions or comments? I will say I'm supporting, I don't normally dress down like this, um, semi-dressed down, so I am wearing my holiday sweater, because today was Christmas, holiday sweater day at Franklin High School, so I am wearing my holiday sweater, and I figured it should say nice, because I don't want y'all to think I'm a naughty school board member and mean to y'all, so we're all nice tonight. All right, so we will circle back to where we were, in the order of events, um, six point two, business by school board members, does anyone have anything to share? Y'all know you can't make it through an evening without me sharing things. Um, first up, I will, um, harken back to last month, after our meeting last month, um, most of the board members, um, attended the Virginia School Boards Association Annual Convention, um, at which time the board was recognized as one of three school boards in the state to receive master school board designation. Um, so we are only one of five in the state so far to be recognized, um, for that distinction. Also, at that meeting, there were two school board members in the state that were recognized out, out of, I think it's eight hundred and fifty school board members in the state, there were two school board members that were recognized as school board members of the year, and one of those two that were honored were, was Mr. Robert Holt. Congratulations, Mr. Holt, well deserved, yes.
Thank you, Coach Frank Beamer gave me my award, too.
Well, that's even, that's even more special, right, Mr. Phelps? Um, let's see. Tomorrow, I think it's tomorrow night, correct me if I'm wrong, the winter concert will air, um, at seven o'clock, I believe, um, Ms. Moore's checking on that, um, our wonderful band will be presenting holiday music, um, so please, if you have the opportunity, go out and take a look at that, hopefully we can make it through COVID, and next year we can do one live and in person, seven o'clock. It will be on YouTube as well as on the school division's website, so please, if you have time, go out and take a look at that. Um, let's see, next up, oh, I did, I did Tuesday night venture out to Norfolk to attend the, um, Governor's School for the Arts, um, Christmas concert, we had a student that was performing in that, so I ventured out that way in the horrific traffic in Suffolk, and, um, it was an amazing concert, there are some very, very, very talented young people in our area. Lastly, I have, um, I just want to send condolences out, the board just wants to send condolences out to Southampton County Public Schools, as they lost a student last week. Um, as an educator, I can imagine it is not easy, because you, you don't just know your students, you know every student that's in your building typically, and it doesn't matter if, which one it is, the loss of a student is difficult, um, for anyone that's in the building, especially for the teachers of that student, and even more so for the students that student has come to know, so we send our condolences out to Southampton County Public Schools, to not only the staff, but to the families and the students as well. I think that's all I have, I always, by the time I get home, I'll remember something that I forgot, but I think that's it.
I would like to mention, um, come March, it'll be two years since we started this COVID journey, and it has really caused havoc in public education, and it's been nothing I've ever seen before in public education.
And Bob's only been at this for a little while.
Right. So, um, you people out in the audience played a key role in that, and you were like a rubber band, you were stretched and stretched and stretched, and then when you got to the limit, we'd stretch it some more, so, uh, we don't say that we appreciate what you do enough, but we do, and we want you to know that, every member of this board does, thank you.
Anyone else? Six point three is minutes, um, from our November fourth meeting, which was our only meeting in November for review, those will come back before us, uh, in January for approval. I will say, before we move to number seven, which I know everyone is anxiously anticipating, um, since this will be our last meeting, before we go on winter break, I want to wish every single one of you a very happy holiday season, I want to say thank you for everything that you have done, um, not just this school year, but everything you have done every single school year, every single day that you have been here with us at Franklin, everything that you do every day for the students and for their families, for the staff, um, we are truly grateful for each and every one of you, and for what you contribute to Franklin City Public Schools, and to the lives of the children of Franklin City Public Schools, and we wish you the utmost in a very happy and healthy holiday season. Which brings me to seven point one, which is adjournment.
Not move, we adjourn.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll make mine a second.
Any discussion on that one?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are adjourned, Merry Christmas, everyone, and we will see you in hopefully a better twenty-twenty-two.